Traffic, streetlights, whatever other pollution there may be along that road. They're exercising their rights and it seems that to say that, to put the burden on them is not just erroneous but arrogant. And I think that maybe you should consider, if this burden is on you, if you choose to take the project forward, that's fine. And if that disapproved, but it's not on the property owners' shoulders for trying to protect what is legally less legal than theirs. I thank you for your time and I encourage you to oppose the funding for this project and then take every action you can to step back, back up and correct errors you have made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for us now? Seeing none? You're good. I didn't see any questions. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Number four, please.
My name is Michelle Hoff and I live at 1210 East Ridge. And I'll be very short. I just wanted to put another perspective on the cost of the road by quantifying a few things. I, if you think of the, Linda was describing this too as, and I don't know how else to say it except for, if these two roads are the new road that's coming and the existing east ridge, and then I'm thinking of Hillcrest, that little piece of Hillcrest across as the top of this rectangle, little piece of Vader as the bottom of this rectangle. I just went out and drove it and I drove what I think was probably too long of a section up top, but that took me thirty-one seconds to get across from where the road would be to where East Ridge currently is now. Then I drove down at the bottom and that took me twenty-six seconds to get from where East Ridge is on Vader over to where the new road would be. I'm guessing the speed limit would be comparable. Would it be twenty-five miles per hour, just as it is down in East Ridge? So any time spent in this direction is not additional time. If you think of it that way, you are spending eight hundred thousand dollars to save drivers fifty-seven seconds of drive time. And if you put that into dollars per second, sorry, I opened it up on my phone. It turns out to be fourteen thousand dollars and thirty-five cents per second. That's the cost of this road moving.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Item two, administration, administrative items. Please say your name and address, please.
Julie McMeekin, eighteen eighty-eight Carol K Boulevard. And the reason why I'm opposed to this is I really think it is a road to nowhere and all it's gonna do on Carol K is cause a bunch of speeding traffic. We already have a lot of speeders on that road now. Oh, I do wanna say I appreciate the extra lights down at the ball field because now we don't have whatever drug trafficking or humid trafficking that was going down there is not happening anymore. Just so you know, there was stuff going on down there several nights a week. Now there's not. So I do appreciate that. But I do feel that this is a big mistake. I didn't weigh in on the work company before because I didn't realize all of what's going on. But if somebody tried to take the land, I guess I'd be very upset. We already have the Department of Transportation taking a little bit of our land over Bielsia in Nebraska to build a four-lane highway that's gonna go basically nowhere for several years. They've been planning that for fifty years. There isn't enough traffic on that road to warrant a four-lane highway past our farm. And I don't think I really want extra traffic on Carol K. We are due with a lot of traffic during the baseball season, during the soccer season, you know, when they have sporting events down there, during the eight o'clock morning rush in the morning and then the end of school rush. There's a ton of traffic on that road already. And we'd like to not have as much traffic as we do. It's really not gonna help. Where you need to put the money is on Waverly Road by the school to improve that traffic flow there and to have a decent road. That road's really terrible. So, anyway, I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on item two?
Erin White, it's seven fifty-six North Forest Street. Obviously, I'm not a homeowner on there, so I have no claim to whether or not it's going to fix problems or not. I'm here as a taxpayer who owns property and my money is going forward to this project as well. And I'm a big person on process because process is what judges, lawyers use. Because what happens? A process protects citizens and it protects government agencies. It protects everyone, right? You follow the process and everyone can do it. I have a few questions. If you can clarify for me, the hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that was written, you had mentioned that it came from a fund. We had a hundred thousand dollars from a fund that we had to use towards a road project. Where did that come from? And then if we don't, under, my initial assumption was that, that I had, was that that was a prepayment. So is that all money that is going towards the engineering costs? Or is that simply sitting in the fund waiting to be used for the actual construction of the road? And if we don't, where does that money go if we don't do the project?
The first thing I'm gonna do, because if we read our agenda and see, yeah, it's to the determination of the mayor, who answers questions, by any of us. So I'll defer to the mayor first whether I even need to answer questions at this point.
Do you have the numbers on the, as far as the?
There's not a specific number. She's just asking what those funds are.
If you can answer it.
I can. Just making sure. There's a process and we read that at every single meeting for people. So, the dollars that Erin's referring to are the STP dollars that we talked about, both during, throughout this process this year and then also in your budget, I believe in two thousand and eighteen. The city had STP dollars that had been held over since, I believe, maybe two thousand and sixteen. And they were sitting idle and we were given notification, much like the C V G dollars we're talking about today, that said, you need to ensure that these funds go out, otherwise they'll need to be returned to the state or you'll be limited on your STP dollars in the future because you're not moving your STP dollars out. So as we talked about in the budget process clear back in two thousand and eighteen, we continued to list these projects in your capital improvement list every single year, both Waverly Road, Carol K, and the Trail. And as we all are well aware in this town, not one of those projects from two thousand and sixteen on has been built yet. And so listing a million-dollar project in our C I P that we don't ultimately build continues to take in state dollars that then aren't ultimately used in the budget process. And so we were continually getting behind. And so to catch back up, I said, we need to ensure these dollars go out. They go to a qualifying street project. And I said, the one that we have available right now, that we have the definitive number we're at a minimum requirement to, was the Carol K project. I think at that time it was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand was our initial twenty percent pursuant to the contract, approximately.
So three different payments. There's three different payments that we made. So one twenty-four and then two other.
So the one twenty-four and then the two others that are in there. The one twenty-four is a prepayment on our initial twenty percent. Again, as we've talked about before, we've currently incurred, and Jody can probably speak to some of this, we currently have approximately incurred about three hundred thousand dollars with the state. If the project doesn't move forward, we do not approve the bid or we would terminate the project, we would be responsible for the total sum of three hundred thousand, which we've already paid in a hundred and twenty-four in our prepayment with STP, but additional dollars that we've paid out from requests by D O T. So those are STP dollars. Those are approved to be moved by this body pursuant to, I think, the two thousand and eighteen budget process. And to get those dollars out, so we didn't jeopardize dollars in the future, we had to stop listing projects that we were not completing within the year because it set off the budget formula that they have in there, showing all these projects you never, year in, year out, were not doing.
Can I ask you a question?
And so that brings me to, I think, what we're talking about is why wasn't this project done as deemed a shovel-ready project? You know, I question, I guess I question a few things about, you know, accepting a bid when it appears through this process, like council members don't know all of the information upfront, right? Either we're not reading materials, we're, you know, saying in other forums that, you know, this is what the project addresses. It addresses one thing and when it actually was said, then a week and a half later, to actually address those things that were said that it didn't address. So I'm looking at this from a money standpoint and I'm looking at sixty-eight thousand initial for engineering costs. And I'm wondering why throughout this process, since the whole argument for the council accepting this project is that the costs keep going up and we're incurring all these costs and we have to be fiscally responsible. What about a sixty-eight thousand dollar initial engineering contract going up to two hundred and eight thousand dollars when they knew, after being reengineered, when they knew that those lands were wetlands? They knew the parkland. They knew the flood plain. They had the right-of-way acquisition deemed for this project at forty-nine thousand dollars in two thousand and nine. So why is no one questioning the fact that these costs have gone up? And I don't know if you want to, but we've contacted people. I've talked to Chris Newman at the Stewardship and Oversight Committee at the Federal Highway. And I've been directed to Mary and I talked to Mary today because I wanna know those answers. I wanna know why, if our argument is we've spent so much money on this and we're trying to be fiscally responsible, why we're not questioning the fact that we have paid over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra on engineering fees for a road that was shovel-ready in two thousand and nine? So that's my question as to why we're pushing for a bid to cover these. We don't know the cap costs. We don't know how much it's going to incur and we're expecting it has very little, you know, there are people who want it and I get that. Nothing is ever gonna be a hundred percent. But, you know, you have all of these objections to it. You're looking at the process for eminent domain and I don't know how many of you have studied eminent domain. I spent more time on the phone with lawyers, Bill Blake and such in Lincoln, and talked to him about the eminent domain process because it, of course, was blamed on the homeowners, that they were raising costs. And I asked him, I said, tell me about the process because I have the process that they went through, that the state negotiated with them. And he talked about good faith measures. He talked about the meetings that they should have. He talked about the timeframe. And in a phone call that Linda had with Tom Weber's associate, she said that the state just assumed through these random phone calls that you didn't wanna negotiate. And I told Bill Blake that and he said, you can't do that. And I said, I know. So my question, and I think really what I'm trying to get at is, you're pushing through a project that has abused citizens that you represent. You haven't asked questions as to why the costs have gone up. I haven't heard you asking those questions. And you're pushing something through that really the process itself is very questionable. And you're also pushing something through where numerous ones of you sitting on the council right now have said you wouldn't have voted for it if it was up to you. But now you're stuck with it. And I think that's a cop-out. I think it's irresponsible.
Erin, you need to tell us you're a candidate for city council here. This is becoming on this.
I am because of this. Because of this, Ellen, I have seen the process that you guys have gone through and I need to do that.
All I ask is that you declare that because this is becoming more of a campaign speech than it is an objection to this project.
I do not think that is fair whatsoever. You are putting some words into my mouth and I will be here, if you'd like, I'll withdraw my city council candidacy and I will still fight this right now. So that is not fair for you to do that and I have every right to stand up here as a citizen. And I will absolutely withdraw that.
Ellen, you want a second? I think we have a five-minute limit if you wrap up.
Yep, absolutely. So I guess I'll go with that. If I were on the city council, I would have asked those questions. I wouldn't be skirting it off that it's someone else's responsibility who voted for this and I wouldn't be doing that because it's not the right process. It's not how you should operate and apparently there are city council members who do think that. And you're one of them who said that you wouldn't have voted for the project, but now you have to. So how do you answer that?
I never said I had to.
It's in an email.
Erin, this is not a question answering. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Erin? Seeing none? Thank you, Erin. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
I have a two-minute.
Ellen, we can't, we can't go back over this once you've talked it up. Anyone else wanna add?
It's a clarification. It's not a.
What's your question?
The clarification is something that Greg mentioned about a letter that Concordia sent in regards to the audit.
What's your question?
I'm gonna just clarify that he made it sound like Concordia was whatever. I don't think Concordia needs to be dragged into this. The clarification was made to Concordia about that word. We said obstructed and the record from the city used the word did not endorse. Now.
Greg just read the actual letter, so there was a misunderstanding. That was their word.
This is in the city minutes from February twenty thirteen and July twenty thirteen. And the city said Concordia told them, I have the record, told them that they did not endorse the project. The misrepresentation was when the audit thing we sent in, we said Concordia objected. We talked to Concordia. That was cleared up because Concordia has no position either for or against. But I just wanna say that the minutes themselves said that they did endorse Concordia. Concordia was not aware of those matters. And so when I shared those with them and I just wanted to clarify that. It kinda sounded, were devious and scary than it really was. And it was a matter of terminology.
Okay, well, I think Greg just read the letter, so whatever was in the letter was there.
I'm talking about what was said in the city minutes.
Okay, well. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Otherwise, we will close the public comment portion of the public. Did you wanna speak? You said your name and address, please.
Yep. Andy Sharnoff, eleven oh six East Ridge. I think I wrote everybody on the council letters, something like that. I'm new to city. I went in here six months, but basically I just stated again what I stated in that email, which is, would you spend the money if it was not being given to us by someone else? And I think that's a good question to ask as you approve the bid. Principle and logic are the issues for me with the building of the road, as already been kind of mentioned. Why wouldn't Labor leave the address first? Why would you wanna divert more traffic onto Hillcrest? And then also, it strikes me as somewhat ironic that America's Fourth of July city would let the government sort of push a project forward for a local government entity. So that's all.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? If not, then I will close the public comment portion of the item two. Greg, did you want Department of Transportation to come up? Would you like to come up? You must say so patiently. Welcome to the podium. Please say your name. We don't need your address. I assume you don't live here.
No. Jody Gibson, Nebraska Department of Transportation, Local Assistance Division.
Brendan Schmeier, Right Lady Division Administrator for the Department of Transportation.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add or Greg?
I guess maybe if there's any specific questions that you have for us. I mean, there's probably a lot of things you could say, but is there anything specific that we can help you work through?
Chris, you wanna ask something?
I think the homeowners need here an explanation of the delay in a shovel-ready project and the process there. I mean, typically, most projects, the city manages, you guys managed this project for us because of the federal involvement. We turned that over to you. And I think everyone is interested in the timeline and the process. If you guys can provide that and why it has taken the amount of time it has taken to get to where we're at today.
Well, I can start a little bit. Like I said, there's a lot of history that I'm not also aware of. But when you say shovel-ready, this project was originally programmed as a U R B, which was when you guys used to get old S T P funds, federal funds, that you guys would apply for a project through us to get some financial support for a project that you had a purpose for. And then, to make a long story short, we moved through and started buying out all the federal funds that went to the locals and municipalities and the counties. There were some of those projects that were already in the queue that we agreed to continue to develop using S T P funds and federal funds. This is one of them. So the shovel-ready part of it, I am not exactly, I don't know if it really hit into a bomb a shovel-ready kind of projects. I could check into that for you. I'm not that familiar with it. But again, there is a process that we have to go through when we use any federal funds to develop a project. So, you know, sometimes those projects can take ten years to develop a project. You know, that's just how it is. You know, we're trying to get better about delivering those projects in an expedited way. But again, we're doing things in the department to move them along. So I can't really specifically talk about why it took so long. There are certain phases that we just go through. Some redesign work was part of it. But, you know, I'm not familiar with all of the history within the last, I know the last four years of the project.
That's it?
I think that, well, just to address Chris, part of what you says, I've, John and I here are the two council members that have been on the council from way back. Well, I was eleven oh six, you were before that. And I do recall, I think it was either two thousand and nine or eleven, when the stimulus dollars went out in our discussions and there's probably something on one of the minute records that there was some language tossed out that the state or federal, we're looking for shovel-ready products, projects to utilize some of these funds. And this was one that was, kinda said, hey, you know, this one would qualify. I think is where that, you know, whether it was ever as part of the actual ask or anything, I'm not sure.
And I don't know where we were in that process of shovel. I don't know. I mean, for shovel-ready, it's, you have a complete design and the environmental document approved. I don't know at the time if that, if that was the case.
I think the requirement was it had to be in your one and six-year plan as something that you were looking to do. And we've never used the term shovel-ready here. That was a federal tagline, if you want, for why they were doing the stimulus. When we look at those types of, those opportunities don't come around very often from the federal government on a specific stimulus package like that. And so I think what, now, oh, nine, he predates me, but eleven, or not eleven, eleven, I would have, I've been here. And so I know part of that discussion was just that it was one of the projects on our one and six-year plan that otherwise didn't qualify for other funding sources because it wasn't a main arterial, you know, like Hillcrest or Pinewood or some of the major roads. And so the opportunity for funding for a project like that, I think, would be more scarce. Is that, I know we've changed it since then. Does that sound, does that sound familiar at all? That was, I guess that was my impression at the time. Because again, I came into it after, I think, we already applied for it.
Yeah, I mean, this specific project, I really, I'll be honest with you, I don't have the history of what happened back then during that time.
The other question I had, besides addressing that, was as far as engineering costs, it was brought up that the initial request and numbers were thrown out like sixty-eight thousand dollars. Is it, and I don't know anything about engineering a road like this. I know it's only like a quarter mile long. Is the amount of increase in engineering that we've seen on this, when there hasn't even been a tractor on the site yet, is this fairly typical or what, how'd that happen, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I think Greg might be able to clarify that because we've, that sixty-eight thousand dollars number's not coming from us. And Greg, you wanna clarify that?
That's one of the first ones because that's been thrown around tonight by nearly everyone that's spoken. And so it just bothers me that we continue to throw up.
Did it come from that original application that Mel filled out?
No, that's where they're getting the number from. The problem is they're not even reading the document correctly. That's the first. So if you look at, and this was, this document's included in their audit request, which is again where they start citing and everyone keeps repeating. I just had it in my hands because I was doing the math and I got thrown off because it got said again. Essentially, what you have to add together there, and I'm probably just put it down in the middle of all this mess. There it is. Found it. Sorry, my apologies. Is that document, and that's the D R three fifty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. And we can talk about that document. It's a two-page handwritten application completed by our street superintendent Mel Aldrich at the time to just put in the initial idea behind a project. The problem is, is when everybody looked at this, the only thing they're looking at is the federal portion of the engineering and they didn't even add all the items together, let alone the local match, and then total it up. The actual total at the initial time was a hundred and one thousand dollars approximately for what is known as the P E phase, which is the preliminary engineering phase. So the request that went to the auditor didn't have that correct, even though the documentation's attached to it. And so people, and it's not a critique, it's just sometimes laypeople that don't work with this directly every day and then we start spreading it around as gospel when just by adding together and localizing that preliminary engineering phase, you get a total of a hundred and one thousand dollars. And that happened throughout the analysis of this document as it was sent to the auditor. And so I just wanna collect the record.
Thank you.
And so that's the first thing.
So instead of sixty-eight, I'll say a hundred and one. And the reason I ask this question of you folks is there's been some talk about the project having to have been re-engineered or, you know, changed a couple times based upon some requirements or because of the state. And so I just wanna know, some clarification, is that in fact true? Was the firm just mistaken in what they thought they were gonna encounter there or?
I just wanna point out that it's not state. We have to follow federal regulations. And so a lot of, I just wanna clarify, it's not the state telling you that you're doing this. It's federal regulations. And so those regulations that we ran through for this project, we ran through for every other federally project that goes, that the local has federally money on it. The process was not any different. Lots of times you get, you start preliminary design and then you get to a point and you try to mitigate for all of this, you know, so you have the less amount of impact for a project. And sometimes that causes some redesign work. So, you know, I can't speak specifically about every single one of the supplements that maybe went out for construction engineering, but there, it is typical on a project. I mean, you know, when you program a project, the D R five thirty that Greg is talking about, that is so preliminary. I mean, you're, you don't have survey done. You don't have a consultant that has even looked at the project at that time. That is just going, hey, we have a purpose of need and we're gonna put some numbers together to hope, get some funding for a project. That really is what it is. That is not gospel. I mean, that is, it is a prelimin, a very, very, I don't even wanna call it preliminary. It is just a, we have a project, we're gonna, we have some, have some ideas of what's gonna happen on the project and until you hire a consultant and you get into the design, that's gonna change. And that happens on every single one of our projects.
Thank you.
Totally. See, we call them a status ten estimate to a status thirty estimate. So a lot of times you'll see about thirty percent increase almost on every project. Just because it's very preliminary, again, lots of time has gone by. I think they all, from an engineering perspective, there's always a certain kind of threshold you have to get above on this project, I guess, for reasons, relatively small projects, a few blocks long. And so it's kind of an additional fee to get into the system here. And so I think there's some of that. You're seeing the engineering percentage is a little higher on this project than you'd see on other projects.
One other last little question I had, and I don't know if this is free or not, but there was, just, I have a question from a council, from my concern as a councilman, as far as the change orders that we're allowing, Emmy Collins, of the three change orders. Is there any kind of a cap on those? Can we set a cap or how does that, how would that work?
Any change orders will come before you guys. So I mean, you're, we're not going to approve something without you guys knowing what change orders are gonna be on a project.
So what are, do we know? We don't know the amounts, all right?
No.
They won't know that till they're ready.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we, we need to guess. We don't, I mean.
Every project has the ability for change orders and I know some people look at it like it's a scam, but the reality is, is that you get into the project, you're gonna find things you weren't expecting.
On the suitable materials.
No, I understand. I just wondered if we, as a council, have the ability to give like a range, like not to exceed X, you know, based upon a recommendation.
You have that ability despite not proving the change order. As far as building it into the original contract, we don't typically do that because we don't necessarily, sometimes, you know, maybe there's a percentage, but it probably run into is you wanna hamstring yourself by saying, here's the cap, and then they're gonna come in and say, well, we're gonna need six thousand more dollars to do this, but no, you exceeded the cap. I mean, realistically, the council would probably approve that so the project can keep going. So you have the, you have the check and balance already in place by bringing the change order back to you, but there's nothing specific on top of that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
When, I just wanna make sure I'm good on the process here. So the one entity said with the audit, we're referring you to the Federal Highway Administration and the state D O T. So as I understand it, from what I think Linda might have said, is then that has, those questions have now been submitted. Do they get submitted to you guys?
I haven't seen any questions.
They were only forwarded, pursuant to the email we forwarded to you. They were. They were only forwarded, pursuant to the email we forwarded to you, they were only forwarded to Joseph, uh,
Joe Wornie.
Wornie, Joe Wornie, who is the division administrator in Nebraska for Federal Highway. His divi- his division, his division is the one that did all the oversight of this project and signed off on it, and signed off on all of the NICA documents. His division is the one, from my understanding of the project, again, a lot of this still predates me, but his division is the one that came back and said, after our review, you need to move the project over, you need to go acquire the right-of-way. That will be his entire division of staff that did all that work.
So it's the same people who've already approved everything?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the process.
That's what I'm holding here, this is the NICA document, it's category exclusion, it's a level three, so it's been signed off by Fed Highway, you're saying Scott Stapp is the review analyst for the environmental side of it, and so he signed off on this document as well as NDOT, as well as the city did in twenty eighteen. Like as you were talking, Greg, with the, uh, shifting of the alignment, which ended up having to go on East Ridge Homewares Association. A lot of that's because of the wilderness park future development, I think there was a two thousand and one city plat, um, that showed this future wilderness park. It's currently being farmed, but because of that, it creates that as a, was it a four F, it's a park now. And so to mitigate that loss, mitigate that damage, the project, the roadway had to be shifted as far over to avoid those impacts. And so that, yes, ended up with them acquiring some private right-of-way, or private ownership property, so.
Any other questions?
One other question, since you brought up process, um, Linda or somebody mentioned that, that they didn't feel like the, the, uh, proper process for the eminent domain was followed, and you're kind of that expert, what's, what's your take on that?
So for us, um, we, uh, Fed Highway or the statutes really don't define good faith negotiations as far as the timeline goes. We've had it interpreted from federal standards that thirty days is enough time to consider an offer. At our office, we tried to make three good contacts with somebody that's actually talking to them on the phone. Uh, I spoke with Linda, directly with her, I think she was in New York at the time, when I spoke with her, um, on the subway, I believe. So anyways, we've talked to her several times, um, property was stated, I believe in January, reviewed the site, tried to make contact, they weren't interested in negotiations. Come June is when we sent out the ten-day letter, that's just kind of put them on notice, give you ten days to realize if this is moving forward, an eminent domain action, because we've heard no responses. With, you know, several months of, uh, back and forth, trying to get even the information of the tenant, they refused to give up who the, who's farming the ground even. So there's been, there was very little cooperation as far as that goes.
Did you eventually though contact the tenant?
So we did eventually contact the tenant.
And what was the response?
Uh, they were listed as part of one of the, the, kind of, the, 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 sort of.
No, as far as like, would they, I don't know if they told you that they weren't supposed to talk to, or was there any conversation about that?
No, there wasn't.
Does that help say?
So typically, we try to go to move condemnation in forty-five to sixty days, our offer ran out in January, uh, condemnation action wasn't filed until, was it December? So almost a year, so we feel that's a good faith negotiations, we've tried several times, uh, the property mistake multiple times, so.
When did we have the, the, um, inmate the main meeting?
September.
September, there, there's, so I guess, did, well, did you have any contact with them between September and December, do you recall?
Um, I think at that point, we, all my contacts were with their attorney at that point. I believe in June, Linda had stopped by, uh, into your T's office, uh, I think Tom Weber's name's mentioned several times, he's my chief negotiator. So she had a conversation with him, please drag now all contacts to our attorney, that's what we tried to do at that time.
Since you mentioned me, I guess, Brendan?
Yeah.
Did you make contact with our lawyer, other than to call and ask who the tenant farmer was?
Uh, several times, we tried to.
You tried, but did you contact, did you talk to our lawyer?
I've talked to Greg several times.
Since or before the eminent domain?
Before.
You only had one contact.
I have emails if you want to see, we're sometimes stating, I've been talking to all of those.
I'm just wanting to clarify, you know, for myself, you know.
I think that your point is that it's not like you didn't try to reach out to them, and that you didn't try to talk to them, and so.
Absolutely.
You can dispute it or how.
We don't want to use eminent domain, we'd love to come to an agreement.
Well, yeah, and we have, and we also, we feel the same way, we rather not have to, and I think in a lot of cases, when you've done projects, you're able to negotiate for the needed property, and then it's not an issue, but, um, do you have any, Sid, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the council this time? Very good. Yeah, thanks for coming to see me. So we have a resolution in front of you, if any other questions or comments?
I would introduce the resolution for the lower bid to Collins Contracting Company for eight hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
We have, resolution has been introduced, and it designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash ten. Anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Some move.
Leave a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
Leave a motion in a second, need for the discussion, same number, register your votes. Please play, please display the votes. Okay.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Opposed, Beck, Camper, Colvin.
Resolution passed, item number three, this is also a resolution approving professional services agreement for construction engineering with JEO Consulting Group, this is Carroll K Boulevard, Beta Hillcrest, NDOT Project URB dash six seven six three, sub one. Did you want to add anything, Greg?
Just note, this is part of the, the contract process, we had to have construction engineering part of the proof process with state on all contracts on this one, so.
Any questions for Greg? Anyone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash eleven, anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Salute.
Leave a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Opposed, Beck, Camper, Colvin.
Okay. Item four, award bid for Sixth Street Water Main Improvement Project, Greg?
Yes, this is, uh, the first of the projects that we teed up, uh, in the ten-year, uh, water study that was completed this last year as part of your budget. This project will essentially replace, uh, Water Main and Properly Size It from the intersection of Hillcrest and Highway fifteen, Sixth Street, all the way north to, I want to say North Street. Basically, just right before the high school, uh, before that turns. We'll also, at the time, since we'll be in the right-of-way of the highway, we have a future plan for another project in that ten-year plan to cross all the way from Hillcrest out to the west, or to the east, as part of the Hillcrest redevelopment of that roadway. We're trying to match those ups, when you go in and redo Hillcrest, we'll redo the Water Main while we have it all ripped out. To avoid causing issues to the highway again, we're going to put in that crossing now, while we're in there developing in the highway right-of-way and dealing with the state, so we don't have to come back and deal with the state specifically on that Hillcrest Water Main project. And so this project was designed by Jake before he left, he put together the specs and the bid documents, has been reviewed by Tim Rich, Jake, the water superintendent, uh, and the new city engineers plan to do the onsite construction engineering enhancement, uh, as they come in. And so Jake did review as part of, uh, this process and, and our continuing, uh, contracts with him, he did review this bid and is okay with moving forward on it.
Questions on item four? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, need for discussion, same number, register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camper, Colvin, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item five, award bid for twenty twenty asphalt overlay improvement project, Greg?
Uh, asphalt overlay project, similar project to, uh, what we did last year on North Columbia. Take care of some of our curbing and corners for water development, and then obviously the surface of North Columbia. We'll also go in while we have a contractor here as part of our budget process for the cemetery, and we'll go in and continue to do some asphalt overlay within the cemetery as planned in the budget. Jake also designed this one, and just like the water project, and he also approved, uh, recommended approval of this bid pursuant to his review.
You kept him busy.
Still am.
Any questions on item five? Any none, are you making a motion?
Move the award bid.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, register your votes, please play the votes. Item six, this is an ordinance amended the municipal code, municipal code, chapter two ninety, offenses, articles, article eight, obstructions to add requirements and set penalties for placing snow in the street right-of-way, Greg?
Uh, yes, so this year, obviously, again, last year was a really bad year for snow. I think we hit our record in regards to the number of times that we, you know, went out and plowed snow. This year, again, we had a few issues because of the nature of the quality or lack of quality of the snow. As you remember, we had some of these were very, very heavy, uh, and we continued to have issues and complaints coming in to the police department and the building inspection office, codes office, about people throwing all of their snow out into the streets, snow blowing it into the street. People are driving by, running into it, and other complaints, and so the PD went out to just go provide notices to people and, and remind them of, hey, you're not supposed to throw your snow off your driveway and step out in the middle of the street. One, the plows may have already gone by and aren't coming back again, it's not meant to be sitting out there just waiting to be melted. And in following up on that, they realized when they went to go look for it, that they could not find the ordinance they seem to remember. And so Bonnie ultimately did track down the ordinance, and it was approved in nineteen ninety-three by the city with the penalty exactly basically as you see written here today. What happened was, is you know, there's a codification process, where we pass ordinances and pass ordinances throughout a year or given period. Then we put them into the book, basically the city code book, and then it's adopted and then they're. What happened was is throughout, we checked every codification we could find in book format after ninety-three, and somehow somebody in ninety-three or thereafter forgot to stick it in there. And it just never came in, there's no ordinance to repeal it ever, it just never got into a codification, then no one ever noticed it again.
Human error.
Yep.
So that's what we're looking at on the ordinance, are there any questions, your comments on that? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter two ninety, offenses, article eight, obstructions to add requirements and set penalties for placing snow in the street right-of-way. To repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in formal form. The ordinance has been read by Kyle and is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash six, and the title is hereby approved, I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Some move.
Okay.
Leave a motion in a second, need for discussion, same number, register your votes, please play the votes. Again, is this ordinance number twenty twenty dash six, anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted, is right?
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, need for discussion, same number, again, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty dash six be finally passed and adopted, register your votes, please play the votes. This is the only ordinance for this evening, so I need one final motion to make this ordinance a part of permanent record.
Some move.
Motion in a second, register your votes, please play the votes. Item seven, discuss claims presented for mailbox damage following snow removal from streets, Greg?
Yes, we don't have a firm policy on how to deal with mailbox damage during snow removal. So when we're out plowing, um, we get different reasonings for why mailboxes go down. It can be anywhere from our mistake, where the plow actually hits it, but the expectation is, is if, I think if you go by the actual guidelines of the mail, the federal mail, your mailbox should not go over the curb line. So as long as my guys somehow aren't jumping that blade up onto the curb, if they're following that with the way that those are designed, and they're following the curb, it shouldn't hit a mailbox. Another thing that we tend to find happens is that, you know, somebody stuck in a mailbox fifteen years ago, they didn't use treated wood, it's rotted, they found, they got some snow pushing on it, and it just fell over and broke off, whether that was at the ground level or above. And then the last one is also just the sheer weight of the snow. This year was the big one for that, um, i- if you went out and scooped any of it on that one specific snow, it was the most incredibly wet snow and provided a lot of weight, if you're plowing in that, you can feel it just driving, it's pushing against you, and that weight will just push mailboxes over. And so we have not had developed specific policy on how we address these, and I think we would like some guidance from the council to kind of do a uniform way, we prefer not to send these all to insurance, that's going to be a big waste of time and effort, and you'll have to process every single claim through and forward it on.
What's the, like, a typical, I need my mailbox replaced, is seventy-five bucks? I don't know, I'm.
Probably a couple hundred, probably.
No.
The time you do your digging, if you put your post and you dig it in and everything, if you do a wood structure, plus you have to get the mailbox, depending on what size, you could, I'd like to say, up to two hundred, probably max, depending if you concrete your post in or.
I just haven't done one for a while.
And the ground is like.
Personally, I guess that's a little high. The other thing is, I will tell you, the state and many of the counties, their position is, the right-of-way is there for a reason. It's meant to be a place where we push snow, where we move things off. And so the state has always said and had the claim, and, and they reference it in an article we saw in the Journal Star, we just couldn't track down the statute, that they basically say, that's what the right-of-way is for, and we're not paying them, we will not approve a mailbox claim no matter what, even if we hit it.
So the state and the county don't, or, the state and the county don't typically?
Typically, no, they do not, the state explicitly doesn't, and it was noted in that article. Usually, the city of Lincoln doesn't, I think they had a situation where somebody just went wrong down normal and got all of them somehow. And so, again, we're just looking for something uniform, I did check with the city administrators across the state, and it goes, it runs the gamut. Some have a very definitive, like, hey, we just do thirty bucks, if you have a claim and you can prove it up, show us a picture, turn in a receipt that you actually fixed it, we give you thirty bucks, that's our process. Otherwise, if you want to file the full claim and send it on to insurance, we'll gladly do so, but it's going to get denied because the state statute says not the municipality or the state or the county's fault, because that is our property, that's our right-of-way. The other concern I have, and I, and if we want to go with zero, perfectly fine with that, if we want to give a number, is make sure also we have the situations right now where people are putting like stone, brick, ornate, post office box, which are very beautiful, we love to see those, but it's unfortunate for us to have to pay a thousand dollars because somebody is putting something out there that we all know we're going to be pushing snow into and other elements as we continue to do our required obligations to clear the roadway.
Plus a lot of people, when they measure for their, uh, mailbox, they're right to the edge of the curb, there's no recess back for figuring for snow plows and that, so the mailbox is going to lose.
Well, the, there is the, the regulations now, they're not, most people aren't putting mailboxes in new developments, it's not allowed. So we are moving away from it, I guess, I would be comfortable with saying, like, here's our designated amount, you can prove, what, like, what you said, bring in your receipt that you repaired it, you have the photos, you know, fifty dollars or something like that, I don't know, that's just, I'm just throwing that out.
The other one that happens, because they just come out in the morning and they see their mailbox down, and we saw some photos where we questioned what happened because there are like tire marks, treads, like, going up to the mailbox, and we're going.
That was nuts.
Some kid could have swung around a corner a little too fast because the conditions slid up and hit your mailbox, backed away and drove off, and you came out and went, oh, they plowed my snow, hey. And, and we're not going to know that, and so, I mean, we're not going to do a deep investigation, we waste.
What are the other cities that are ready, I mean, did you throw this out on your little, your old forum?
Yeah, a lot of them don't do it at all, they don't approve claims, they just say, no, it's, it's just like the state does, it's, that's the rapport, for the right-of-way, that's the expectation. You know, if you want to have an expensive one up there, you can do it on the relative cheap. I see a lot, we threw around years ago, thirty-five dollars, apparently was something that had been mentioned in City Hall. Fifty dollars would potentially be appropriate, again, we also don't, but you're opening the door for all of the.
Whatever, if you said an amount, every claim's going to be at least that amount.
What's your recommendation, Greg?
My recommendation? We've done it in the past, and we continue to be good stewards of the city, and so I think a, uh, a nominal amount to help offset the cost of thirty-five, fifty dollars, I think that's appropriate, um, but we'll do, we'll try to do our due diligence again, I don't like having the police department wasting time going staring at mailboxes for hours upon, and that's what they did, they had to file investigation files and everything else. As long as we have photos, we kind of can check with the guys, we know their routes, we know where they're going. They, they sometimes say, hey, I saw a big old whip of snow just push one over like a feather, it could be because it's rotted, you know.
I wouldn't make it automatic, I think there should be some discretion, otherwise there, anytime somebody wants to replace their mailbox, they're going to wait until it snows and kick it over.
It's true, I mean, that, that's a risk you're taking, I, I don't think that most people are like that.
I think, I, I guess it's some kind of nominal amount at the discretion of the administrative process. I think, I, I guess it's some kind of nominal amount at the discretion of the administrative process.
How many a year do we get?
Oh, normally, just a handful, just a few. This year, I mean, it was like.
We're not getting tens and twenties, thirties.
How many do we have sitting there now, Bonnie?
I think we probably have ten from the last storm.
So, it's, it's not a lot, but.
Thirty-five dollars?
A lot of times, it's just the nature of the snow. I mean, if, if it's something where it's turned into ice, and the, our crew's going down in a pretty fast cliff, and they're just ripping ice off, you know, you're going to have more, more instances than you do if it's just a regular snow where it's, it's not real wet or real heavy.
So, Greg, can you, you put together a policy then and bring it back? Is that what you're going to talk about?
If it's a policy, we just keep it internal, we just want guidance tonight. If you say, hey, I'd move that we leave it to the discretion of administration and cap anything at, and throw a dollar amount out, that's all.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move forward with something capping it at fifty dollars, and, uh, leave the rest of it to the administration to sort out the details.
Second.
Leave a motion in a second, need for the discussion. Same number, register your votes, please play the votes.
The administrator's brief report.
I'll, I'll answer any questions you have. Um, again, just been knee-deep in, in kind of finishing up this Carroll K project, uh, finishing up our FEMA projects in relation to the floods last year. Hoping we don't have more this year, seriously. Um, and then, uh, continuing to work on getting these projects set for the summer. It's going to be a very busy construction year for us. Uh, and then we're also interviewing and finishing up interviews with city engineering units. There you go.
Any questions, none, your motion to accept the report?
Move.
Okay.
Motion in a second, register your votes. Please play the votes.
Could you request for council agenda item to mention of action?
I don't know if this is an agenda item. I just want to make a, I guess, a request to look at Hillcrest as part of the one and six-year plan in the future. I assume we can do that as part of that process?
The only thing I'll note is, I believe it's in the one and six.
Fantastic.
But, just for clarification purposes, it's in the one and six, it's segmented. The first segment is, and the reason being is because, as we've stated before, the preference by NDOT and engineers in those projects was, do not work on the roadway adjacent to the federal project at the same time.
Because it will be in the way, yeah.
They don't like mixing those things. So, they said, avoid that, and so, as long as I've been here, every year that you've programmed in, and I think even before my arrival, you've programmed in the Carroll K project, you've programmed in the improvements adjacent thereto for Hillcrest. And so, next summer, pursuant to your current CIP and one and six, we'll go through and improve, I believe, from approximately the trail or Carroll K all the way up basically to East Ridge. We'll improve the roadway, storm sewer, and then probably a sidewalk connection to the trail on one side or the other of the right-of-way there. Then from there, we'll continue in the segments, and maybe one big one, probably not, it's pretty in-depth process, but we'll do the segment from there to, I believe, North Columbia.